All right, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Today is Monday, September 20th, 2021, with time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez is on her way. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez?
Here.
And Mayor Walter, here. At this time, we are going to begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. (Mandela) The United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, At this time, we will go ahead and we will open our call to the public. We do have one request for public speaking this evening. At this time, I'd like to call forward Vicki Pacey. And if I pronounced your last name wrong, I apologize. Please correct me.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, and members of the Florence Town Councils. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. You pronounced my name correctly, so thank you so much. My name is Vicki Pacey, and I am the Mining Executive with Rio Tinto Copper, and I'm also the Permitting and Approvals Manager for Resolution Copper, which is located just outside Superior, Arizona. In 2014, Congress passed a bipartisan agreement. Part of that was a package of 80 lands bills that was attached to the National Defense Authorization Act for fiscal year 2015. Resolution Copper's land exchange was part of that package of 80 bills in this bipartisan agreement. Representative Ann Kirkpatrick in the House, Senator John McCain in the Senate, both worked together to move this bill through, which would help unlock and really allow the Resolution Copper deposit and the mine to come to fruition. Part of this deal required that a comprehensive environmental review under the National Environmental Policy Act was completed. It also required protection of Apache Leap, which is a beautiful natural escarpment that surrounds the town of Superior. It also required additional consultation with Native American tribes and compensatory mitigation. The comprehensive environmental review under the National Environmental Policy Act was led by the National Forest Service, 11 other federal and state agencies, 11 tribes, as well as all the stakeholders across the land, all the six communities within the Copper Triangle, counties and towns within Penal County, Hila County, Maricopa County, and everybody worked together in good faith over years to change the project proposal, put facilities in different locations, work together on mitigations for an outcome that worked for And earlier this year, the final environmental impact statement, which the Forest Service produced, regular order, 3,000 pages, was published. Unfortunately, at the same time, legislation to repeal the land exchange from back in 2014 was also put forth by Representative Raul Grajava. There were not enough votes for that repeal of the Resolution land exchange to pass the House, so it has recently been attached to the reconciliation bill that is being currently contemplated in Congress. This is part of the 3.5 trillion infrastructure bill that is currently being debated and will be debated over the coming weeks. If the Resolution Copper land exchange repeal legislation were to be successful and continue on as part of the budget reconciliation package and become law, it would undo this bipartisan agreement that was struck many, many years ago. It would essentially render the good faith effort of thousands of people who participated in good faith, including tribes, local communities, to come to a beneficial solution on this project, a win-win. It would completely extinguish our ability to mine, because not only would it repeal the land exchange, but it would extinguish the unpatented mining claims, so not only could Resolution not mine, but nobody would ever be able to mine this 1.5 billion tons of 1.5% copper, which is one of the largest undeveloped copper deposits in the world, and it's in our backyard. The economic benefits that were independently analyzed by the United States Forest Service, $1 billion annually over 60 years to Arizona's economy. Just in Penal County alone, that's $2 billion in taxes. The economic benefits are tremendous, the jobs, there's 1,500 direct jobs located on site, 3,700 total when you include induced and indirect. So this is the kind of base industry that really keeps local economies running, and it's in the Copper Triangle, in the Copper Corridor, a place where mining has been a fabric of the economy for over a century. So I stand here tonight asking, thank you for your time and for a letter of support for the project to oppose our bill being included in the reconciliation package and to allow us to just have an opportunity to bring this mine to fruition. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming and speaking this evening. As everybody is aware, both staff and our council, we've had a positive working relationship with Resolution Copper, up to and including when we had the presentation through CAG, and we were able to change some locations that would potentially have not been beneficial to our community, but to relocate that for a win-win for both communities. So at this time, I'll go ahead and give staff direction to look into that, bring that letter forward for council, and we can proceed as a whole.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Is there anybody else either in the community or online that would like to speak at this time? Okay, I do not see any hands raised, so I will go ahead and close our call to the public at this time. We have our first presentation. This is a proclamation declaring September 2021 as Deaf Awareness Month. We did have a group that was going to come and have a little presentation as well, however, there was a little misunderstanding of the dates, so we will proceed with the proclamation, and then I will also meet with their group, and I'll invite council when that happens. So this is our Deaf Awareness Month, September 2021. First, I just wanted to share two resources. The first resource is a resource that is available through our state, and on their website, the Arizona Commission for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing has posted various family resources to assist Arizonians struggling with deafness. These include programs and services available for Arizona's families with the deaf, hard of hearing, and deaf-blind, which is combined vision and hearing loss, newborns, children, and youth. You can find information located at this site. The second is another resource, which is called Hands and Voices. This is a nationwide nonprofit organization, which is dedicated to supporting families and their children who are deaf or hard of hearing, as well as the professionals who serve them. They are a parent-driven, parent-professional collaborative group that is unbiased towards communication modes and methods. Their diverse membership includes those who are deaf, hard of hearing, and their families who communicate orally, speak American Sign Language, Q, and/or combined methods. Their goal is to help children reach their highest potential. More information can be found at their website, and this is the Arizona chapter. And here's our presentation. This is a proclamation for National Deaf Awareness Month. Whereas the deaf population includes a wide range of individuals, from those who are born profoundly deaf and use American Sign Language as a primary means of communication, to those with a degree of hearing loss, who use hearing aids or other forms of amplifications and communication modes, and whereas each September, organizations across the nation work to raise awareness on behalf of its citizens who are deaf and hard of hearing, and to promote available resources for the educational and effective communication needs. Many of these hard-working individuals build and maintain our infrastructure, provide healthcare and human services, educate and mentor our future generation of leaders, and serve as a piston in the engine of our world-class economy, and whereas Florence is enriched by the diverse and unique heritage, language, and culture of the deaf community, and people who identify as deaf belong to the cultural and linguistic community with shared language, social norms, rules of behavior, and history, and where it is important to ensure that Florence's deaf, deaf-blind, and hard-of-hearing individuals have equal access to the many benefits and opportunities available to hearing individuals to live, work, and play and communicate in Arizona, and whereas to commemorate the first Congress of the World Federation of the Deaf, which was held on September of 1951, Florence recognizes the entire month of September as Deaf Awareness Month, and whereas the purpose of Deaf Awareness Month is to increase public awareness of the issues and the culture of people who are deaf, this is an opportunity to promote equal access to information and services for deaf individuals, and to educate the public about the misconception of being deaf. It is also an opportunity to learn about the types of educational programs, support services, and resources available to deaf people, as well as to individuals who are deaf, blind, or hard-of-hearing, and now therefore I, Darryl Walter, Mayor, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as Deaf Awareness Month in Florence, Arizona, and commend its observance to all citizens. Thank you very much for coordinating that translation as well, Mr. Bitter. At this time, we are going to go ahead on item number seven. This is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of the sub-recipient agreement between Penal County and the town of Florence for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Americans with Disabilities Act, Sidewalk Improvement Project. Item B, ratification of the inter-agency agreement with the Penal-Hila Council for Senior Citizens Doing Business as Meals on Wheels of Central Arizona, to provide senior nutrition services to elderly Florence residents. Item C, ratification of the vehicle lease agreement with the Penal-Hila Council for Senior Citizens Incorporated, to provide one 2011 Ford bus for senior transport services to the town of Florence. Item D is approval of the August 2nd, August 9th, and August 16th Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item E is to receive and file the following Board and Commission Minutes. First, July 28th, 2021 Historic District Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes. Second, July 15th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. If there's any item that you would like removed, please make a motion at this time. Seeing no motion, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight is new business. Eight A, discussion, approval, disapproval of authorizing the town's sponsorship of the 2021 Junior Parata Rodeo's events and expenditure of $20,000 by the town from the mayor and council contingency funds for the event's expenses allocated at the direction of the events organizer. Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I'm so pleased to present this tonight. When I brought this up at the work session the other night, I think this is the first thing I've ever presented to the council where I had unanimous support. You know, and I brought it up, I think everybody on the council seconded my motion, so I'm pleased to do this, and I'm pleased that the Foster family is here tonight, Mr. and Mrs. Fosters, and I'm just so proud of what we're doing, having the rodeo here. I hope we continue it years to come, so thank you very much.
Any questions or comments by council? Mr. Foster, thank you for being here this evening. Have you, would you like to step up to the dais podium? Have you given consideration after the meeting where Mr. Anderson made the recommendation, thought into how you're going to allocate this funding?
Absolutely, yeah. If approved tonight, it would be just spectacular that we can continue to move forward with the events that we have planned, and the support that we need to give those vendors and the AJRA to help put on a really good rodeo and provide prizes to these contestants that are coming into town.
Okay, so the $20,000 would be allocated to the prizes?
Part of that, and then also, you know, we'd like to plan for some events here in town if we can, and we haven't discussed that yet, but that's one of the plans to move forward.
Okay. I appreciate that, and the only reason why I brought it up is I was thinking after the meeting, and I just wanted to put it out here so everybody can talk. So when we put out, you know, the RFP originally for the $5,000, I appreciate and admire the fact that you put a plan together and you stepped up and came forward for that plan. I also look at how we do the RFPs and how we have other events going on in the town as well. So you're familiar with the new grant program that we just created, where you can have the up to $3,000, one person can have up to $12,000 for those events, correct?
Yes.
So I look at those types of applications and processes, and I always look at anything that we approve as, you know, ensuring where is it going, how is it going to be spent, how is it going to be accounted for, just because it is, you know, taxpayer dollars. So to me, I do care about that, and I know you do too. So I had one of two ideas, but I didn't want to, you know, share it before the meeting, I wanted to share it at the meeting to see what the general thought is. My thought is, so since we are currently a sponsor with you in this event, and I know that there's additional events that will be planned in town, and we have the grant program set up to have those additional events in town with the up to $3,000 each, I was looking at saying, do we want to wait until after the event to see which donations were brought in, which sponsors were brought in, what events could have been facilitated or were facilitated downtown and supplemented with that $3,000 grant program because we have that review, and then have that discussion at that time? But I'm genuinely open to conversation, I just wanted it to happen out here.
Sure.
What are your thoughts about that?
No, I, again, you know, as quick as this came upon me and the group, you know, we're just trying to, we're just trying to get things moving in the right direction so that we can hold this event, but definitely the funds will help get through the, get through this first process so that we can, you know, look at what we can expand on and actually hold other events here in town. That's the idea, is to do something in town as well for this parata.
Okay. Do you feel that that other program would be helpful?
Oh, most definitely.
Now, if we gave you the $20,000 now, would you also seek that additional funding?
Well, again, I think it's based on sponsorship and what it's going to really take to get this off the ground and put on for this year, so.
How are you doing with sponsorship so far?
Well, so far, we're still in the planning stage, but we've, as I mentioned in the work session, we've had an overwhelming response of people that want to help and want to donate, so I think we're going to do real well on that.
Okay, absolutely. Now, I appreciate that, and I, again, appreciate everything that you're doing. So you haven't had anybody come forward, like any big-name donors so far, and say, "Here you go."
Not yet, not yet. We're hoping for it.
Okay. Well, the rodeo is very close, and I know that you and Mr. Allen have been walking the grounds. How are we doing on that end?
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor, we're doing well. In fact, we have another meeting set up for tomorrow morning, along with Public Works to Walk the Site Again, so.
Okay, when I read through the agenda packet, because one of the, and of course, it's not loading right now, so I'm going to go off of memory, so I apologize. One of the items, that's okay, that I had read was the $20,000, and if I read it wrong, please correct me, the $20,000 would potentially or possibly also go for rentals? Is that correct? Because I didn't remember that, I didn't recall that in our conversation.
Mayor and council, that was a correction of mine that I actually made in as a note as part of the agenda item. When we were at the work session, council had said that any repairs that were going to be done were going to either be paid from the CIP fund or the food tax fund. Now, those two particular funds are, have definitions of what they can be used for, and so if we were doing replacements to a facility, new improvements to a facility, we could use those. If it was an asset that the town of Florence could basically put an asset sticker on, and it was going to become part, we could not. So what we said is, when we got into the conversation of rentals and paying for rentals, that does not fall into that particular line item that council had requested that we use for budgetary expenses, and that's why we made sure that we did note that to clarify and correct the record.
Now, is that something that we could get a better rate on than Mr. Foster could get a better rate on?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, it really just depends. I wouldn't say either one of us could get a better rate, it would take some research and looking into it.
Okay. Now, and again, so my original intent, and just so I back it up again for our council, my original intent was, do we want to proceed now, or do we want to proceed after when we have a presentation? But it does sound like you do need some additional funding and support.
Yes, and it would really help to get this kicked off and going.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any other counsel?
I'll just make a comment. So for me, I think the fact that we have a party that this is your first time doing it, so they don't have, they didn't do it last year or the last 20 years, so they don't have what we would consider reserves or anything ready, it's just a start fresh, brand-new, so I think it's hard to say, oh, well, let's wait until after the event and see what your sponsorships bring in, because I think if sponsors are going to see that the town is supporting you, it's going to make them want to come in. If they see that the town is hesitant, then they might say, well, we'll think about it. So I think, for me, the purpose of this agenda was to say that we were going to support you more than what we initially had. Now, next year, it might look different, because if you come back, then that'll be your second year, you'll have a better idea of what it's going to cost, and hopefully we will have made some repairs to the facility, but even at $20,000 to host an event that you need to pull off in the next month is probably, probably still not enough money, but I'm glad that Councilmember Anderson offered or suggested that we increase our gift amount, or not gift, sorry, our amount. So I would stick with what we initially, what the agenda item says.
And I agree with you. Like I said, I wanted to first communicate, also just kind of share my thought regarding the processes, because again, I very much always go back on when we set out, you know, the RFP, what it was, when we set out our processes for expending money and additional grants. Like, we always know what is that money going towards specifically, because we have to be accountable for that. Now, when we're talking about, like as Vice Mayor mentioned, support versus intent, I feel that we supported you when we chose you for the RFP, and we continue to support you through having, you know, the work sessions and the communication with our staff, and again, we are appreciative that you came forward, especially as the grandson of Charles Whitlow, and that's in your family heritage, so we appreciate that as well. And I don't want to scare him, because we have three months before the Junior Parata. However, there is a lot of planning and preparation that does have to take place between now and then.
Sorry, I thought we were already over.
That's okay. Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, members of council, we've had nothing but a wonderful experience working with Fosters, working on this event. If you approve this item tonight, we'll work with Mr. and Mrs. Foster in terms of the use of those funds, and make sure that the best event is provided that Florence can possibly provide, and that all of the justification for expenditures is provided to council.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was just going to say, thank you so much, Brent, for providing that, and I agree, we completely support you, we support this project, we support the rodeo going forward. Just want to make sure that we're also being fiscally responsible or taxpayers, and I'm sure you understand that, so.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you so much for coming forward and putting this event together.
No, thank you all.
Are there any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the town's sponsorship of the 2021 Junior Parata Rodeo event, an expenditure of $20,000 by the town.
Second.
And to be spent out of the mayor and council contingency fund.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for being here this evening.
You bet.
Item number B is Resolution Number 1799-21. This is a discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona by and through the Department of Transportation, and authorizing the mayor and town manager for the town of Florence to execute the documentation associated therewith, and the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and declaring an emergency. At this time, Mr. Benjamin Bitter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you are all well aware, as part of the legislative budget from this past year, the town of Florence received an earmark in which we are, we were given a million dollars to reconstruct the Butte Avenue Bridge on the way to the Ayman complex. As you'll see in the agenda packet, currently, for emergency services to respond to the Ayman complex, there's a long detour that also applies to any truck traffic or bus traffic that goes out to the Ayman complex. And so when we approached our legislative delegation, they were very supportive of putting an earmark into the transportation funding within the state budget. When we did bids in 2018 for the project, it was scheduled at that time to be about $800,000. We asked for a million dollars from the state just to ensure that if there were any project overages since that point, that we would have enough to cover that, and so we successfully got that in the budget. The governor signed the budget with that line item, and now in order to receive that funding, we have to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Transportation that will then be forwarded on to the Attorney General's office for their signature, and then we'll be able to receive the funds and administer the project at that time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much, and this has been going on for a while, this has been going on since we were meeting over at the correctional facilities and the discussions that occurred. Are there any questions or comments by council? Are there any questions or comments by Council?
I have a question. If we approve this tonight, we have to go to the Attorney General's Office and say, "How long will this all take?"
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Anderson. Uh, it's a quick process, because we're using the, the IGA that's already been reviewed, uh, from the state, and so, uh, they just have to really sign, similar to how, how our town attorney signs as to form, to ensure that the format is proper. The Attorney General's Office will do their review and ensure that the funding that is allocated in the state budget is matching to what is in the IGA and, and that type of review. And so, they do their legal review, should be a fairly quick process, and then we'll be able to, to receive those funds. Um, we have to do the full engineering as, as part of this process, so we're not ready to construct today or tomorrow anyway. We still have some time out before, uh, we'll do that and, and go on that process.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion we approve, uh, Resolution Number 1799-21.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Item C, discussion approval-disapproval of an extension of the professional services contract with the Coolidge Engine Pump for deep well and well pump maintenance in the contract amount not to exceed $300,000. Mr. Chris Alice.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. In today's world with utilities, it is very common to have what are known as maintenance contracts. Um, all the communities in the valley have them, all of, um, the tribes have them, this is a common practice. So, we set forth, um, previously, we did a competitive solicitation, which we required them to submit hourly rates, weekend rates, overtime, holiday, and then we have two factors in there for markup of goods, one for smaller items, and then a smaller percentage for big items. Um, I'm, I'm not aware of anyone else doing that in the state, but we broke it out, because we thought it was the only way to keep them honest on large markups on large items. They agreed to that. Um, they've also agreed, as part of the original contract, to supply us with all of their invoicing so we can track that percentage. Um, with that, the town has used Coolidge Engine and Pump kind of on an unofficial, non-on-call status for years and years. Uh, they have worked throughout Pinal County and Coolidge, and like I said, this was a previously competitively solicited contract, and they were awarded, and so now it is just time to renew it.
All right. Any questions or comments from Council? Need a motion?
I make a motion we approve the extension to the professional service contract with Coolidge Engine Pump for deep well and well pump maintenance in contract amount not to exceed $300,000.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Item D, discussion approval-disapproval for the proposed Silver King use by Home Smart Lifestyles and direction of staff to enter into a lease agreement negotiations. Mr. Elon Malander.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, um, it's a pleasure bringing this item back to, to Council. As a direction of staff, recently, uh, Council asked that the Silver King Suite 202 go out to RFP. Um, RFP is a standard process that we utilize, uh, to solicit, uh, sale and/or lease of property within a redevelopment area. Um, Suite 202 is a second-floor suite. It has a total of 14, uh, 1,430 square feet in it. Typically used for commercial buildings on a second floor that does not have traffic-access patterns is, uh, usually a destination retail location or office-type user, such as real estate offices, title offices, law offices, et cetera. Um, so, as this proposal came in, this was the only proposal that was, uh, that was submitted during this RFP process. The proposal is for a branch office of a real estate brokerage. Um, the space will provide a location for the company's 20 local agents. I guess I should advance my slide here. Whoops, going too far. Um, and they plan to, uh, enter into the space, uh, with an open space-type of plan, so there are no tenant improvements, uh, asked for during this. Just as some background information in regards, uh, to this use and the general community, there are four real estate brokerages in the downtown area. Um, there have been some calls and discussions regarding additional retail brokerage uses. Um, I have responded to those individuals, uh, in this way. From an economic development standpoint, um, there are two approaches. We either are responsive, or we're out recruiting. As far as recruitment goes, we will look for, uh, uses that are needed within our community, and typically uses, you know, for example, we've got a small grocer, we wouldn't be looking to bring in somebody else that would, uh, cause damage to our existing businesses. In a case like this, um, this was a company that's coming into our town looking for space, so we treat all of those on a fair playing field. Um, as far as the use goes and the competition, competition exists everywhere, uh, in the economy. It's part of, it's part of our economy on a national level. So, in that sense, I just want everybody to be aware that there are brokerages that are out there currently, and this would be an additional one coming into our area. Um, there are indeed, when we look at the composure of our downtown, um, between law offices and real estate offices, we, we have a high representation of both. So, office use is, is typical in our downtown right now. Um, as part of the process, uh, we look at benefits that would occur based on this use. A high benefit is, it does match a typical use for this type of s- uh, suite space. Um, the 20 agents that they have are local agents, they do live in the area, and they are looking to utilize this space to bring those agents in, or allow those agents to bring their clients into our downtown to sign contracts and, and conduct any business that they have to conduct. Uh, so that will definitely bring increased foot traffic in, and that would be a benefit to the businesses that exist in the rest of Silver King, as well as those that are around in the downtown area. In addition, um, real estate offices, um, are, in a very real sense, marketing firms in a lot of ways for communities, so those agents will be out touting the community in a lot of different, uh, manners and fashions. Um, Home Smart Lifestyle Realty is a, a large brokerage, um, with a very familiar name for folks, uh, so there would be increased exposure in that sense from a marketing standpoint. Um, secondarily, I'm going to add a slide in here that wasn't, uh, in your packet, and I am doing so because of some questions that have come in. Part of our lease policy requires that we establish a market rate, a fair market rate. Um, I went ahead and reached out to our local brokers that represent properties in our downtown area, and, um, through the responses of those brokers and, and the lease rates that are existing, have come up with a, it's about 77 cents per square foot per month is the fair market rate now. There are a couple outliers that came in, so we had, um, I had several responses. I tried to take the outliers out to make sure that we weren't either under or over. Um, there was, there was a lease that was well over $2, and there was a lease that was, um, close to 50 cents a square foot. On average, we came out to about 77 cents when we took those two, those two outlier, outliers out. Um, our existing lease policy is a modified triple-net lease. It, uh, accounts for the government property lease excise tax that all of our Silver King and Bruning Camp Building tenants have to pay. Uh, so essentially, what we've done, our practice has been to take this fair market lease rate, take net of it, so take the G-Plat amount that they would pay on an annual basis out of that, and then come to a lease rate, um, that they would pay on a monthly basis. With this information, our lease policy in addition, and this was a discussion that Council had asked, um, from a previous work session to come back in in October or November to discuss with the general body, but since this lease, this use and potential lease is coming up before, uh, that, that session was intended to happen, that discussion will kind of happen here as well. Council has the opportunity, based on our lease policy, to approve a lease at less than fair market, uh, fair market value. Um, within our policy, and I, I believe it's on page four, or page five, um, item C, it says that as long as there's a value, uh, public value finding that's associated with the adoption of the use, Council can address any lowering of, lowering of lease rates from fair, fairly, fair market lease, excuse me. Um, on this slide, I've included a couple options. I'm not going to go through and read those, but, but if Council so chooses during the discussion to, uh, give direction to staff to come in at a lower-than-fair-market lease, uh, these options would be the process by which we could do that. In regards to our lease policy, are there any questions, uh, that are coming up from Council that you would like to discuss at this time?
Vice Mayor?
I don't necessarily have a question, but it probably will turn into a question. So, um, I know I had this conversation with Ms. Garcia today about our leases, and I have a couple hiccups on, on our policy. So, to me, it makes no sense to come here to Council and have people come to get approval for a lease and not know what their rate's going to be. Like, for me, I think if we're going to do a rate study, it should be done before the RFP goes out, so that way we're advertising what the lease rate is going to be. Um, so, I think we need to address that our lease, our policy and our actions are not matching each other, and then that makes everybody's job easier, because then everybody knows what it's going to be. But at, um, a couple Council meetings ago, I don't know if Lisa was able to find that date that we had that Council meeting, we discussed our rate, and that's when we, we had decided as Council to keep the rate that it was at, to keep that rate there, and we lowered the rate of the, um, tenant that's upstairs with the fabric store, because when she had initially signed her lease, she was put at the higher rate, and we had, at that time, discussed that because she signed her lease knowing that was what the rate was going to be, that's what we were going to charge her. A year later, here we are, still in a pandemic, and the Mayor had asked that we make it fair for everybody, so we lowered her rate to make it so they're all at the same rate, and in that meeting, we stated that the rate for the empty space would be leased at the rate that the rest of the tenants were at. So, that's why I said it's kind of a question, but not really a question, because to me, I feel like we had already addressed the rate issue until it comes to us again as a, as a separate issue, because in that meeting, we had already stated what this lease rate would be for this property.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I would agree with your assessment of, of what you're discussing there, and that, that's why with this slide, I bring this back up, because as a part of the lease policy, we have to do a fair market study, um, so that needs to be presented here, and then the second piece up there is to give you the option to do exactly what you're talking about, but we have to, as you guys do this adoption, approval of use, one of these two statements would need to be added into that motion to ensure that we can include that, um, as a portion.
Added in, well, would we add it into the motion because it was already motioned and voted on in a previous meeting of what that rent rate would be for this unit?
So, this, this is how, this would be the approach that, that I would suggest be taken. Um, if the motion is to, uh, adopt the use, then you'll have your motion to adopt the use for the space. In addition, um, one of these two stations, statements, option one and two, and then put in the lease rate. Now, so the lease rate that you're looking at, and if you give me just a second to...
I want to say it's like 50-something.
So, right now, um, what we're looking at is that the lease rates, currently, current monthly rates are about, um, let's see, so the four, the four, uh, current tenants that we have, after the adjustment for G-Plat, are about, uh, 25 cents to 30 cents per square foot per month. G-Plat on those retail is about 25 cents, so we're at about 50 in total.
Right.
Um, so this is, this is where, you know, those differences come in. G-Plat, uh, rates for this use are actually a little lower than the rates for retailers.
Because G-Plat is based off of the type of business, not based off of their revenue or anything, right?
Correct.
It's based off of office, restaurant, retail.
Correct.
That's how that's figured. Okay. Um, and then, before we go any further, I'll, I'm all for having the discussion, um, because I think it's beneficial for me to be a part of that discussion, but I do have to recuse myself from voting on this, because I have a personal connection with, um, Home Smart. So, just so everybody's aware, I cannot vote on this, um, lease agreement, but I, I will partake in the discussion.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to make one clarifier. Um, is that the combined total rate that we have is equal to a set dollar amount, and that was what was deemed as the fair market value at the time?
Correct. Yes. So, at, at the time that that original study was done with these, the fair market value came out to about 50, 51 cents a square foot, and then net of the G-Plat, we got down to each of the individual rates for, for the various, uh, current tenants, and those, those vary from 25 cents to 30 cents, based on a square foot amount.
Councilmember Hughes?
So, they're not across-the-board the same amount?
They are not. When I, I, I went ahead and ran the calculations again today, just to see where we fall out. Two of them are at 25 cents, one's at 28 cents, and another one's at 30 cents a square foot. So, they average out to 25 and a half cents, but this, and this was part of that discussion at the work session that, that we were looking at, so these, these leases, as, as Vice Mayor Cordis indicated, um, one of them was adopted at a different time, uh, than the others, and again, the G-Plat adjusts the rates differently, so we have an office user and, on one of these leases, and that G-Plat use is actually less. So, a retail user in current rates pays $3 per square foot annually, and office user pays 275, it's, if it's a two-story building, and I think 270 if it's a one-story building. So, there's an adjustment there. That user, that office user will actually have a higher, um, payment to the town, so, but the same overall, uh, per square foot payment. It's just G-Plat's smaller, so the scale balance depends on which side they're paying more on.
So, just to clarify, you're saying that the amount prior to G-Plat is the same universally through all the units?
Yes. So, everybody on, on a gross, on a gross, the gross amount that they're paying to be in those units is, should be the same.
Okay.
But on a net, it's going to adjust based on the use.
The use.
Okay. So, what, the gross you're saying on this unit would be the 77 cents per square feet?
That's what fair market is right now, based on...
Okay.
And, and just so everybody is clear here, I looked at from First Street down to Butte, um, that's most comparable to the market that this is in. If we go further than that, then, then the composure of the market changes, so we, I stayed within that area there and looked at the leases.
Yes, I just want to make sure that we're consistent, and I feel like there's not a lot of consistency. I feel like we're making this overly complicated. No. Oh, sorry. God, I forget my... So close to me. No, the, that's where the confusion for me was too, was that we had, at the last conversation we had on this topic, we had brought the fabric store down so that they would all, and included this fourth space, so that we wouldn't have a bunch of different rates going on. The G-Plat makes sense why some, why it fluctuates a little bit, but their base rent is the same, their G-Plat is then what brings in the factor that might make it different for one unit versus the other, square footage, there's different things, but the gross is different, or the gross is the same, the net is different. So, for this one, though, it would not be the 77, because at that meeting, we had agreed to put everybody, until it comes back to us, and then we make the decision on what we're doing for rent. Correct. Right. That's, I understand, I love that. So, it sounds like we're saying option one is what we're consistent with on the slide. What would that rate then be?
That, that is up to Council to direct staff as to what the rate they would like to see there. If you were to keep it consistent with existing leases...
Right.
Then you would be, you would be sitting about 50 to 51 cents per square foot on the gross.
Okay.
For Council to consider, I, I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt, but for Council to consider on this, this would be the first lease that we would be discussing. We have four other leases currently that are month-to-month, and at the last work session, Council directed staff to go out and discuss potentially moving those two-year leases or to wait until the October, where we could figure out what, um, where you all wanted to go. with lease rates. This discussion, in that sense, is the first time that we're going to, we're going to have that discussion now, and if we apply this now, the question becomes, will we change that in November when we start bringing those other leases back? That's the only thing that I would ask you all to consider. If you want to remain consistent with all of them, then this discussion likely would then apply to the rest of them. We'll have to have the motions with the rest of them, in that sense, to maintain this lease rate, but this would be that first discussion to figure out where you want to be with the year, the-
Now, I'm more confused.
So, I feel that you've already done a really good job with your presentation-
Mayor.
And, hang on one moment, please. Thank you. I feel that you've done a really good job with your presentation, and looking at what your statement is, and in hearing the discussion, through option one, where it states town council determines that a decreased rate of serves the valuable public purpose of promoting the continued health of the local businesses leasing town property during the COVID pandemic, that covers that ability to have that communication and that dialogue in October, November, where we determine. From what I'm hearing from our council, we want to make sure that it is consistently and evenly applied throughout all of those properties, so that way, we're not favoring one over another inadvertently.
Absolutely. Understood. So, that being said, then, we're looking at what rate is that, that you'd like it to be? I heard, what I heard was the fifty cents that everybody, that everyone-
Correct. And it sounds, if I'm understanding correctly, like this is the majority. We want to be consistent and in line with what we're implementing across the board. If October, November comes, and we have that discussion, and we say our economy is back up, our market value, you know, defaults back to what it was prior, again, that's going to be consistently and evenly. I feel that's something that would need to be communicated to HomeSmart, who's looking at utilizing that space, just so they're aware that that would be a possibility in October, November as well.
I have another question.
Okay. Can I just-
Yeah.
Cue in Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I'd just like to raise a question about the agenda itself. We talked about rate here, and that was not agenda, that was not on the agenda tonight. The agenda is to approve the proposed HomeSmart lease agreement.
It falls in under the direction of staff to enter into lease agreement negotiations, because Mr. Valander needs that background knowledge and informational direction from our council, so he can proceed in that negotiation.
I'd like to ask the clerk for an opinion on this. The rate sheet that was presented was not in my agenda packet.
I would love to speak on this, but I have to declare, I'm not an attorney, I cannot provide you legal advice. Your attorney is sitting right down from me. But, the motions that we put on the agenda are suggested motions only, but you can go in and you can make a more detailed motion, and you can put more items within that motion. Just because staff didn't word it a specific way, council is allowed to make their own motions. Attorney, would you like to, Kalif Matis, would you like to?
But is staff allowed to add something that's not on the agenda?
So, the topic of renting the space is the topic that's on the agenda, so council gets to have the purview of discussing anything that's related to-
I'm not talking about the council. I'm talking about staff presented a lease sheet here that was not presented to us prior to the meeting.
As part, and I will defer to Kalif, as part of, as part of agendizing materials, so what happens is the town clerk's office, we prepare an agenda, and this agenda, this is the one that is by the open meeting law. All your items are listed, but then we include an agenda packet to prepare you, to give you as much information as we can, so you're prepared to talk about those things. We also go out of our way in transparency to publish those online, so the public will be able to have input and be able to see that as well for transparency. But if there's something that's missing in that packet, staff can add items to it. Remember, it's the discussion item that's being agendized that opens the ability for the discussion to happen. Anything that's needed to be discussed or looked at in order to make that decision is authorized to be discussed.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I agree with everything the town clerk is saying. The, the point two of, of an extra document being submitted into the record that maybe was not in the packet sent out previously to the council is, is appropriate. I mean, it, it, it may make it harder for you sometimes to do your jobs, because you haven't seen it ahead of the meeting, but it has, it's not a violation of the open meeting law. I mean, it's, it's an open legislative session, as issues come up, as long as they're related to the topic on the agenda, then you can present additional testimony and documents to support what is being discussed. So, it, it's, it's okay to, to look at the, and consider the, the document that was submitted tonight.
I will make one clarifier. If council was at this time saying that we wanted to vote for increasing all rates to be seventy-seven cents, is that what we said, seventy-seven cents? Then what we would do is we would say, we want to properly agendize this, where the other tenants would be able to possibly have discussion, but since we're not doing anything that would actually affect the current tenants, we're, then they're still on lease-to-lease, we've done nothing. We're only talking about this item, this lease.
Yeah, that's, I, I agree. And, and it's a legislative hearing. The time when that's different is when you have a quasi-judicial hearing, so if you were acting as the Board of Adjustment, say, for on a variance, then you have a packet that is submitted to that board, and it can only be that information, but you're not acting in that capacity.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hughes?
Now, do we, to change, to make sure that the policy's consistent with the action, do we need to adjust anything in the policy?
As always, if we're going to adjust a policy, we would like to bring back a draft of that policy for council to consider. If council would like staff to, to direct staff, we were happy to do that, and I believe that your economic development director is already looking at that.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
So, we talked about the leases. Did you say they, that everybody's still on a month-to-month lease?
That is correct, when their, when their lease originally expired.
Right, because I thought that, correct me, because I may be wrong, but I thought in that conversation, we said to offer them month-to-month, or they could sign it a lease, and we were leaving it up to them. So, whatever they decided, they must have all decided to do month-to-month. What will this lease for this space be? Will it be a month-to-month, or will it be a year-long lease?
It would, the term of the lease would be a minimum of one year.
Okay. Just, I, I just want to make sure that, that council knows if, if it was approved tonight, that this one would be a actual lease versus the other ones that are basically on a temporary lease, because at the end of thirty days, it could be expired or whatever. Right?
That's correct. Their, their original lease is allowed for when the original term expired, if there was not an extension filed within sixty days before that, that they would automatically revert to a thirty-day, a month-to-month, with a thirty-day-out clause.
So, if we, if we did a work session, and then during that work session, we, we said, okay, we're ready to do the rent adjustment, and come up to the seventy-seven cents, or even eighty, whatever it is, those three leases would be affected by that, but the, this space, if signed for a year lease, would not be affected until their year was up, correct?
Correct.
Because you can't go into the middle of someone's lease and change their rent.
That, that would be standard, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Unless we had it at the fifty-five cent race, rate with the option one, where it said leasing town property during the COVID pandemic, and then if everybody else's went up to that, say, seventy-seven cents after that, then theirs would as well. But again, I'm just going to redirect for one moment, because the motion, I'm going back to it, is giving direction to enter into lease agreement negotiations. So, at this time, I'm going to say, I feel that Mr. Valander has heard enough of our feedback and questions. At this point, I'm going to ask our council, do you feel that this space would be an appropriate space for the HomeSmart lifestyles to have a office, thus giving direction to staff to enter into a lease agreement negotiation?
I just want to make sure staff does have that clear direction, because to me, I'm hearing different things. And so, I just want to clarify. From my, from my perspective, I think that they should fall under the, the fair market as we did with the sewing space upstairs, and with the adjustment for the COVID, so that when and if we decide to go back to a fair market price, we're not breaking our lease or changing our contract mid-contract, because that's really their contracted price. So, I think that that's fair to leave that open, just as we did with the other business. So, I just want to make sure everybody's on that same page.
I'm hearing multiple mhm's.
Okay.
So, yes.
As long as everybody's on the same page.
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, we can add a term to the lease that allows us to take a look at those leases, as you said, November, Elon. And if, if council decided to increase those leases in November, we could add that as term in the lease. It's, it's subject to review by the council in November.
We had that discussion at, with those business owners, that we would have a discussion. We truly don't know what is going to occur, and we are still in the midst of what is going on in our current state. So, at this time, I am just going to proceed. Do you have enough direction, Mr. Valander?
If I may, Madam Mary, yes, as I understand it, council is asking that the lease be entered into at the existing fifty-one cent rate, with a clause in there that will allow for it to, for the rate to increase, subject to council's determination on the effects of COVID, I guess. If I may just add, it, it is possible, it's unusual for most tenants to sign a lease that has a clause that allows the price to be raised before the first year is up. So, just informationally speaking, it typically, most commercial, commercial properties and commercial tenants are looking for something more solid.
If that were the case, and I apologize for interrupting you, if that were the case, then I would make a request in front of council, and please disagree if you disagree, that you're consistent in your language, as Councilmember Rodriguez mentioned, in regards to the other leases, where their rate is seventy-seven cents, or whatever that verbiage is, I did not have it in front of me, is a square foot, but they'll receive a discounted rate of, so long as we're still experiencing the COVID. Because when they put in a response to the RFP, if I'm not mistaken, they responded at that current published lease rate that's out there.
So, again, as, as Vice Mayor Cordes indicated, we, we were in the middle of the fair market study when the RFP, when I was asked to get the RFP out, so I did not have the fair market dollar in place yet. And therein could be a little bit of the confusion for a potential tenant. That being said, that being said, given, I, I understand where, where council is giving direction here. It appears that a majority of council has indicated that they want a clause in there for, for COVID, for determination that it could raise, there's a discount currently at the fifty-one cents, and that it could raise up based on a determination of council in the future when we go to that next meeting. So, that's the direction that I've, that I have understood to receive.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hughes.
I really am not comfortable. I agree with what your analogy was for commercial, is that when somebody's coming in, they want to know what their rate's going to be for the next year. They're not going to want to have it, they never know when it's going to change. So, if, if this is for a year, I would like to at least discuss a set rate for them for a one year, because he said it wouldn't be from a, from a month-to-month, it would be a year lease.
We have a representative, do we want to ask her?
Hi.
What, first, I want to ask, in the RFP, what did they respond to? Because I know there was a dollar amount in there.
There was none.
There's none.
Wasn't anything that was not unshared, as Councilmember Anderson alluded to? And I probably, alluded is not the word I meant to use. Referenced.
Vice Mayor Cordes, Vice Mayor Cordes had indicated, and Councilmember Anderson, I believe, both indicated that, that, so, the RFP was fair market rate, there was not a dollar amount attached, or an amount attached that, at that moment in time, so. And that, that was based on, very simply, the fact that the fair market study hadn't been done, and that council had given direction to staff that we were going to be bringing this back to determine what lease rates were going to be towards the end of October, and beginning of November. So, it was, there's a little-
Typically, just so you're aware, we always have those rates out, you always know what it's going to be, and it's very straightforward, so I'm disappointed in that process. I wish that it was there and accurately posted. Would you like to come up and?
Thank you so much for having me in your wonderful town of Florence. My name is Stephanie Sandoval, I'm the designated broker and franchise owner of HomeSmart. I own and operate three different territories. I recently purchased your area, as well as Coolidge and Eloy. I'm choosing to go into Florence first. So, I'm excited to be here. I'm a little nervous, because I know you are all there, and it's being recorded, but I'm happy to answer any questions about HomeSmart or technology. I can give you some background, if you'd like that, if anyone's not familiar with HomeSmart. Would anybody like any other information, or have questions?
Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I'd like to say that our discussion tonight hasn't been about HomeSmart. We, we appreciate you coming here, and we look forward to you.
Thank you.
In your office here. You know, our discussion has been how we're treating everybody in that building and the rate, so.
Well, we're excited to be here. I have twenty full-time realtors that live in Florence, that currently drive to the Queen Creek area to meet with clients, to pick up their paychecks, to everything that they need to do for their business. So, they are on pins and needles to have an office in Florence. We also have eight thousand agents in the state of Arizona, so we're looking to grow in Florence and our market here.
Well, we certainly appreciate you being here this evening, and again, choosing Florence. We're rich in our history, centrally located between Phoenix and Tucson, as you know. So, and again, as Councilmember Anderson referenced, the discussion this evening really was more about giving direction in regards to the lease negotiations. We genuinely care about all of our businesses, especially when our businesses that are leasing from us, our philosophy is being consistent and fair. So, with that comes a lot of discussion.
I understand. We're really excited to be part of Florence, and all the towns that I'm a member in or own and operate in. I'm a member of the chamber, so I look forward to joining your Florence Chamber here, and being involved locally in the downtown area.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you for coming tonight and representing your business, and we look forward to having you in the community, hopefully, and that, you know, we appreciate your agents being here and being a part of our market, so thank you so much.
And I have some brochures as well, if you guys, I will leave it to Elon, and he can give them to you.
Thank you so much. Yes, Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, as we sit here and think about it, probably the best way to do it is to approve an annual rate, or an annual lease, that, that encapsulates the fair market rate, and as part of that lease, they get a discount for a period as determined by council due to COVID. That's probably the easiest way to do it, instead of having an extra clause. Have a rate for a year, fair market rate as advertised in the RFP, but understanding a discount until council makes a decision on rates.
All right. Now that I've heard four different people say the same thing, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we enter into a contract with a fair market rate, but it be adjusted to the COVID rate until further notice.
You just made a motion "but." Okay. I was going to say, if you made the motion the way that it was written, they can still do that same exact action.
Okay. Well, I withdraw my motion.
Can somebody read it?
Is that correct, Brent? If we read the motion as given, and you guys have that direction, you guys can make that adjustments, correct?
That's correct. We have all the guidance we need.
Okay, now I have to find it. Okay, I make a motion-
That's option one, you need to pick option one. If- You need to pick option one, if that's what you're going to use.
I make a motion to approve the proposed Silver King use by HomeSmart lifestyles and direct, and direction to staff to enter into a lease agreement negotiations. This doesn't have a rate. With the fair market rate, selecting option one. I'm going to leave it like that.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E, discussion approval disapproval, to suspend the Town of Florence special event vendor permit rules for Road to Country Thunder events to be held October 9th, 2021, and April 2nd, 2022, to allow the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to coordinate vendors and collect vendor fees as a fundraiser for both events. Mr. Allen.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This is a routine item that's been done since 2017, whereby the typical $10 that would be collected, would be waived, and those dollars would go to the chamber. Road to Country Thunder is an annual event for the Town of Florence. They assist us in helping to gather vendors. They're uniquely positioned to do this because they are a chamber, they have a lot of resources with local businesses, regional businesses, and things like that. With that, I entertain any questions.
Any questions or comments from council?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Could we encourage them to try to get some, like, other, what do I want to call activities? I was going to say events, but that's not what it was. Some other type of activities, like axe throwing, or, you know, just something to make it, give people a reason to kind of get here a little earlier, and give them a reason to stay the whole time, and maybe some new food trucks, and, like, spice it up a little bit.
With axe throwing, both of our public safety just went, what?
Okay, so if you haven't seen it, it's a trailer, and it's got a cage built around it, so when you throw the axe, it can't go anywhere, unless you're like me, and you throw it backwards, then it might go somewhere, but it's actually a really cool thing. They had it at the Queen Creek food truck night that's every Friday night, and it's pretty cool. But just, I, just some different things, other than just the music and the few vendors that we have. I'd like to see some new vendors, and maybe reach out to people that are further than just our local area.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, so what I'm hearing is, is mix it up a little bit, and if the axes are red, great.
We could put faces.
Oh, Lord.
I got some election signs that they could use.
All right. With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the suspension of the Town of Florence special events vendor permit rules for the Road to Country Thunder events to be held on October 9th, 2021, and April 2nd, 2022, to allow the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to coordinate vendors and collect vendor fees as a fundraiser for both events.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Item nine, call to the public. This is our second call to the public this evening. Is there anybody in person or online that would like to speak? Seeing nobody in person, nobody online making that motion, going ahead and closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. This is our... Councilmember Mendoza.
At this time, I don't have anything to...
Councilmember Neal.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Hughes.
Today, I have something. We, I'm part of the Pinell County Water Augmentation Authority on that, that meeting, and one of the things that we brought up is, we work with the Central Arizona Project, and it's one of the things that they were talking about is how much, they have a CAP University, and so the question was, how much do you know about the large canal that brings water across the state that it feeds, it fuels into 80, more than 80% of the Arizonians? And do you know how it works? Do you know where the water comes from? Do you know where it was, the history of it? Do you know how it's been built and the future? So CAP University is having a free online presentation about the history of the canal. And so we put this on, it's on for September 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00. And it is on our, it's going to be on our main website, and it's right under, it's right above events, and it'll have a little cap on the bottom one right here. So you can push it, and it's just, it's free, and it's a great, it'll give you the information, because I think a lot of people aren't really familiar with how many states feed off of the Colorado, so. And we are in a tier one as of, you know, January of 2022. So it is important to know where, about our water, and where, what it, what it does and where it comes from. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Very informative. Councilmember Rodriguez.
I don't have anything tonight.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I don't have anything tonight either.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cordes.
I am on the East Valley Transportation Committee, something like that. And we talk a lot about the money that Pinell County has designated to be used for roads and things like that. And a lot of times, partly my own fault, but I feel like council, we need to challenge ourselves, because I don't have a lot to add to the conversation, because right now, all of that money is being spent in Queen Creek and Santan Valley, and especially right on the Pinell Maricopa line, where you're seeing a large amount of growth. And as we sit here and look at our roads, and I complain about our roads, we're not fighting for those dollars. So I know that Ben and I were supposed to have a meeting with Supervisor Goodman. That has not happened yet, so if somebody, Brent or Ben, if you could reach out and get that meeting to happen, because we definitely need to get our roads addressed, and I had expressed my frustration in a meeting to council, or to Supervisor Goodman and the rest of the members, that Florence was being left behind, and that as, as great as it is that they're expanding their roads and doing all this roadwork, Hunt Highway still continues to be ignored, and Hunt Highway is a major roadway on this side of town, and it affects Queen Creek, it affects Apache, it affects everybody, Coolidge, Casa Grande, it affects all of us, because it's how you get in between. And we all know when Hunt Highway has an accident or floods, MS's everybody, yeah. So I expressed to them that I really wanted to try to find a way for us to expand it, because two lanes is not enough. So if council wants to help give me some back on that, and give me ideas of what you want me to talk about when I go to that meeting, because I'm going to be in it by myself for a while, so I need some assistance. And then also, I really wanted to ask Community Service, Parks and Rec, I got our little brochure for things, and what happened to all the activities? There's only like two for adults and two for kids, and I just, if you could, at some point, whenever, if we could get together and figure out why there's like, what seemed like a lack of stuff to do, and how we can, what we need to do as council to help you beef that up a little bit more.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, that would be great. And just, just off the cuff, going through the pandemic, we lost a lot of our contract.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but it's just council announcement, so follow up on that. Sorry, Hughes.
That's it? That's all I got?
Can I just take on to Michelle's real quick, and to say, I'd love to be a part of that conversation as well, regarding meeting with Goodman, as, I don't know if we want to do a joint work session, or if it's more beneficial time, constraint wise, to still keep it as a meeting, but I just, I'd love to have further discussions regarding that.
Yeah, I, I don't know how it, because it's like a committee, so somebody will have to tell, tell me how to do it. I know, I know, but I'm just saying.
All right. So a few things. Yes, I am supportive, first of all. When it comes to our transportation, we have had some blessings, like, for example, we have the Gila Bridge that we are working on in partnership. We've had, I believe, a million dollars for the bridge that's going in over by the prison. We have, I forget how much money in regards to the roundabout that is going to be going in over by Burger King. So infrastructure wise, we are continually partnering and reinvesting in the community with those dollars. So I appointed Vice Mayor on to the EBIT board with Supervisor Goodman. I feel that it would be beneficial, because a lot of council's concerns and a lot of what we've heard from our citizens, also in regards to where Hunt Highway comes up to 79, the widening of Hunt Highway, we've communicating the need for the expansion. We've had our citizens reach out to Pinell County as well and submit, and they've received feedback, and they share that feedback, where it says, this is what we got, a few years down the road, we'll take a look at you again. A joint work session is a great idea in regards to bringing the Pinell County supervisors and our council together, so that way we can definitely have their ear in that impact in regards to what our citizens and our communities need, highlighting not only the amount of residents and citizens that live here, but we have a large amount that commute in and out and travel those roads. And when there is, you know, either an accident, or a weather event, or country thunder when it comes up, how much it congests us, even though our emergency responders have done a fabulous job with their notifications and the rerouting. Just having that dialogue is beneficial. So let's go ahead and plan that, but please wait until football season is over. For Councilmember Neal.
Came on right there, we missed it.
I also wanted to just mention, we have a lot of fantastic events coming up. We're coming up upon our spring break with Florence Unified School District. There's going to be a barbecue event that will be happening in the first weekend in October. This is a national recognized event, and it's going to be held right here, downtown Florence, right on our main street. The following weekend, we'll go ahead with our Road to Country Thunder, family friendly event. Please come on out, bring your family, enjoy the shows, and, you know, come visit, have a great bite to eat, hear some great music, dance in the streets. Following weekend, we do have Country Thunder coming into our community. This is the largest pop-up town in our state that happens over the weekend, and, you know, we have something almost every single weekend in October through November. So we're really happy. What started before as, you know, there wasn't always a lot of things to do, turned into great events once a month, and now it seems like we have something happening every single week. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, our Third Fridays that happen here in town, and just the amount of participation that has grown over the years. So thank you to everybody who makes that possible at all levels. We do have an executive session after this. Yeah, John didn't have anything. All right. So with that, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries.